Okay, we are going to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, June 9th. It is 7:01 PM. And this is a regular meeting of the Fullomet City Council. We have a decent agenda this evening. I think there's not a ton on it, but I think there'll be some good discussion. We have the inclusivity proclamation, presentation from the Fullomet Community Foundation. We have a couple of hearings on our city budget and then adopting the resolution for that. Then we'll get to public comment for anyone here who's for public comment. And then move on to our consent agenda. We have a resolution around some sewer work that was done and how to pay for that. And then we'll finish with our usual reports. So to start things off, if the city recorders could do a roll call.
Mr. Andrade?
Present.
Diane Crocker?
Here.
Spencer Irwin?
Here.
Brent Caseman?
Here.
Bruce Nielsen?
Here.
Richard Salza?
Present.
Chris McMoran?
Present. And yes, as I think Counselor Andrade is motioning, if you're here for public comment, if you can just make sure to fill out a little form and then you can hand it over to our dear city recorder, Crystal. And then we'll make sure we get to you at the appropriate time. So first up, we have Resolution 2509 reaffirming the inclusivity proclamation. I'll just do a quick sort of overview and then just for context, which I think it talks about in here, this was initially adopted, I think in 2020 with the intent to just kind of update it regularly as needed and just kind of make sure it's a living document. So it's come before the council every year since 2020 for a chance for thoughts or revisions or not. And that's what we're doing tonight. I know Counselor Andrade and Counselor Crocker are also on the inclusivity committee. I don't know if you have any other context or insight you want to add to this discussion?
Just that we didn't get around to reviewing it in the committee before noon, but we did a lot of work on it last year and the year before, so not too worried about it. But yeah, that's why there isn't any information about any suggestive changes or whatever.
Counselor Crocker, do you have anything?
I just like that it's based on 1964 Civil Rights Act and the Bojangles Act of 1965 and Disability Act of 1991. These things have been in our government for quite some time. And grateful.
Thank you very much. Did I see a hand?
I have a recommendation for in addition here. So in the second whereas, beginning with line 15, so I'll read that and then my recommendation for an addition. Whereas Fullomet strives to be a city based on mutual respect and understanding, a community that welcomes and values all residents and treats everyone with human dignity and respect. And then I would recommend we add because they are made in the image of God. I don't normally read the Declaration of Independence, but we are getting close to Independence Day, so I took a look back at it. And the rights that we have to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness come from our Creator. And so I think if we're making an objective statement that we should treat everyone with human dignity and respect is to ground that in something. And so I would recommend because they are made in the image of God.
Okay. Are you making a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion on the table, is there, or on the floor? Is there a second on that motion?
Sorry, can you state what the motion is?
The motion would be on line 17 of the proclamation or the resolution to add because they are made in the image of God. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Caseman and seconded by Counselor Nielsen to amend line 17 to add because they are made in the image of God. Is there discussion on that motion? Counselor Crocker?
I believe that as fact. I also believe that government and religion should be separated. How much Jefferson didn't always do that, but I am not comfortable with that, even though it is my belief. I don't want to push it onwards, I think.
Is there other discussion on that? Yeah, Counselor Nielsen?
I think Brent has described, I think our country was founded on a belief, a Christian belief in a God. And so, yes, we've gotten away from that in a lot of the proclamations and documents that we're currently forming, but I don't know. Maybe it's not such a bad idea to not, maybe there's a way of higher being or phrasing it in a way that would be nonoffensive to those of us that are not. Because I think I'm a member of several interfaith groups and a higher power or a higher belief or a being greater than ourselves is a common belief system for a lot of individuals. So in keeping with Counselor Caseman, maybe there's a way to add something in far as as faith or belief or higher being or, I'm not sure. It's an idea.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion on that motion?
I don't think it's appropriate to add in here, especially considering the idea of separation of religion and government. I know that you're not necessarily stating religion by invoking a higher power or anything like that, but then there are also people who actually don't believe that there is one. And so I think just to like, you know, make sure that we're all good, like, we don't, we don't need to include it. And I think it's a way to help prevent any sort of, I don't know, issues from happening. There's a lot of positive and negative contact, there are connotations associated with this idea and I just, it can be very traumatic to some people. So I would not be in favor of editing that line at all.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other, yeah, Counselors also?
Let's go more.
Please.
The only thing that I have an issue with is that it's gone this far and this kind of discussion would be more appropriate at the committee level that generated this statement rather than waiting to, that's a fairly material change to have to come before the council tonight. So I would, I would not be comfortable in making that kind of change without first going to due process with the committee that actually created this to begin with.
Thank you. Yeah, Counselor?
So then would, are you in favor then of taking that edit to the inclusivity committee for review and then having this come back at a later date as opposed to just voting on it now? Is that something that we can do or?
We can, I mean, there's.
There's no need for it to be signed today. It's just. It says it in.
But we have revisited it.
And there have been.
There's nothing says we have to pass it.
This is true. And there have been many times where we have not passed it.
Correct. Well, that.
Or when it's been a different month.
Sure. I mean, I think that would be a, that would be probably a separate motion.
Yeah.
I don't know if Counselor Caseman, if you would be interested in that?
I'd be willing to withdraw it if it could be, you know, come up in the inclusivity committee for sure. Yeah.
Okay. Is that something that council feels open to, to sending it back to the inclusivity committee to consider?
I would feel more comfortable with.
Okay.
And thank you, Jessica, for that. That was really a consideration.
Okay. Then I guess I'll move that we send Resolution 2509 back to the inclusivity committee for consideration of Counselor Caseman's suggestion. Is there a second on that? Seconded by Counselor Andrade. So it's been moved by Mayor McMoran and seconded by Counselor Andrade to send Resolution 2509 back to the inclusivity committee for further consideration of the suggestion. Is there any discussion on that motion? Counselor Andrade?
Are there any other edits that we might want to consider taking to the committee?
Might put a vote on this motion. If there's others, we can add those as a separate motion.
Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion on this specific motion on the table? Okay. Then would all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think that looked unanimous. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Any other considerations on that resolution?
Mayor?
Yes.
From my governance standpoint at the very end of the resolve, I did tweak that language a little bit from prior years. Previously, it spoke about requiring essentially, or the current council was committing that future city councils would review this in June of every year forever. And I just reworded it to say that the next year, city council will look at this again in June. And so as long as it gets renewed every year in June, that'll be the case. It just doesn't put such a forever clause over your committee, future city council members for all time and eternity to review this every year, but we're going to look at it next year if we prove that. So the inclusivity committee might look at that language. I tweaked a little bit too. It's just a governance issue more than anything.
Thank you. Okay. Any final thoughts on this? Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have Resolution 2510, the 2024-2025 fiscal year supplemental budget. I would give you an overview, but Mike is here and we'll do a much better job.
Okay. I'll read your page in.
Oh. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I need to rip my agenda off of my packet so I can flip back and forth easier. Okay. Yes, we're going to table that and have a presentation from the Fullomet Community Foundation. Please, yes.
So good evening. My name is Brad Pangkalan. I've been in the Fullomet area since about 1992 and I've been on the Fullomet Community Foundation Board for about six years. So we're going to talk about Fullomet Community Foundation tonight. This presentation was put together and.
I'll just say, we try to keep presentations to about 10 minutes, so.
Got it. Thank you. You could tell it was going to go long. I could see.
Well, our council president has her timer up here, so I wanted to give you a heads up.
Created the presentation and my apologies for the changes I've made to it. And then I'm with Linda Howard, who is our current vice president. So tonight, we will cover community foundations in general, specifics about Fullomet Community Foundation, and highlighting new scholarships that we have, why community endowments and funds matter to rural communities, and how you can help strengthen the Fullomet Community Foundation. Next slide, please. So we operate on these four pillars. Philanthropy, there we go, stewardship, integrity, and leadership. So through generous charitable giving, we can build permanent resources that can be used to help the community. Good stewardship ensures resources will grow and be available in perpetuity. Strong integrity fosters trust and additional giving and cooperation. And then capable leadership enables the articulation of shared community goals and aligns them with individual values. Next slide, please. So a history about community foundations. Over 100 years ago in 1914, the first community foundation was established in Cleveland, Ohio. And then there was a big change in 1969 with the Tax Reform Act that allowed a big upswing in estate gifts because of that tax change to community foundations. And the number of community foundations has now grown to nine hundred. So a lot of community foundations across the country. And today, community foundations continue to face ongoing challenges. A lot of that has to do with just collecting resources. So next slide, please. So how did, I'm going to go off the slide a little bit here, but how did Fullomet Community Foundation start? It isn't like there's a Johnny Appleseed that runs around and says, oh, we want one here, here, and here, and provides some seed money and some organization makes it happen. Doesn't happen that way. So in Fullomet, some very influential and community-minded members said, we need a community foundation. We need to collect funds and make them grow and then give those out to the community. And some of those people were Joe Malcolm, Stephen Kersley, the bosses, Rod Harvey, people who got together and said, we need to see what we can do to help this community and get organized. So what do we do? We are a 501(c)(3) foundation and we encourage philanthropic giving. There we go. We serve the greater Fullomet community by giving out grants to the youth, to family, to community services, to arts and economic development. Next slide, please. So who manages or runs the community foundation? We don't have any paid staff. Our current president is Doug Edmonds. It's all volunteer board of directors. We focus on those four pillars and then everything we do focuses on those to serve our mission. We currently have 10 voting directors serving on three-year staggered terms. And then we have Councilman Spencer Irwin, who is serving this year as an ad hoc member. Last year, it was Diane Crocker. And we value and appreciate your input. Next slide, please. So in 1999, when that group of individuals in the community that wanted to put this together first started, they started with some seed money of about $9,000. Now we are 26 years later and we have 1.4 million. So now we have some funds that we can really do something with. So this slide shows the positive impact of responsible stewardship and charitable assets held in the Fullomet Community Foundation. The Fullomet Community Foundation assets have trended upwards. They tend to kind of follow the stock market a little bit also because we're heavily invested. Next slide, please. So how do we distribute our funds? This graph shows that pretty well. We invest our pooled charitable donations to grow and make more charitable assets. A portion of the assets flow out to the community in the form of community grants to other 501(c)(3) nonprofits, distribution from financial sponsored funds, and then educational scholarships. In 2023, we gave away about $31,000. In 2024, about $42,000. And with the scholarships this year, we'll grant more than that in 2025. So next slide, please. So charitable funds. So Fullomet Forestry Booster Club is a charitable fund that we control and own within Fullomet Community Foundation. The others are agent funds that are created by the organization and then we hold the funds so that they, the organization can use them. So that's another thing we do is someone can bring funds to us and we can hold and manage those. And the rest of them are that. Next slide, please. So one big thing we do is scholarship funds. And we have a full list of our scholarships and details on them on the Fullomet Community Foundation website. So obviously with cost of education steadily rising, talented deserving students that need financial aid, these funds have been developed by members of the community mostly and they're endowment funds or funded annually. And then those are distributed to worthy students at the end of each year. And of course, we would love to have more scholarships. We'd love to have more endowments, endowment scholarships, larger amounts. We'd love to get more four-year scholarships. So our goal is to continue to grow. Next slide, please. So new scholarship that we have is the Fullomet Forward Scholarship. Maybe some of you are aware of it. It was the vision of Anton Rube to show appreciation for the Clement Scholarship that he received and his, really his invitation is for anyone who's received a scholarship to give back and give back in the way of this scholarship that's designed to give money over the four years. It's very common for many of us received scholarships before we went to college and it was for your freshman year and then your sophomore year, you start with nothing. And so this is a four-year, $1,500 a year, or total of $6,000. One student was randomly selected to receive that and on June 2nd, at an all-school assembly, that student out of 24 who applied and were applicable to receive it, received that scholarship. And we love this idea and we're very grateful to Anton for bringing this forward. Next slide, please. There we go. So why community endowments and funds matter to rural communities? So I'm just going to read kind of the highlights here. They provide a local capture mechanism, a way to collect funds. They enable leveraging of other resources. They build community assets. They give local people control. I think that's really key to have control over that. They build community and they grow hope. Next slide, please. So how can you leave your mark on this great community? So you can spread the word about Fullomet Community Foundation. I think there are a lot of people that don't know about it, people that have funds and may would like to keep those local. Include Fullomet Community Foundation in your estate planning or make a major gift at any time. You don't have to wait till you pass it or help out the community foundation and the community. Establish and grow an endowment at Fullomet Community Foundation to support what matters to you. You can specifically earmark those dollars to support an individual thing in the community, arts or kids' sports or whatever you want, and then those funds are held for that. Or you can give a general fund and with that funding, as the community changes and grows, then we can, as stewards and board members, apply those funds as they're needed. You can contribute to Fullomet Community Foundation Fund and the Fullomet Forward Scholarship. So you can contribute directly to that. Next slide, please. All right. Thanks. Thanks for letting me come in and have your attention. And if you have any questions, you're happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
If you need to help me with any hard questions.
We just have a comment. I've talked to people and they know about the Benton County Foundation, but this is our own and this is very special. And anything we can do to support getting the word out and just making sure people know that it's there, I think is very important. They do such good work. It's incredible. And the scholarships for the kids and other things, it goes on and on. And it's right here in Fullomet. And so I don't want people thinking they have to go somewhere else. It's right here.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? I don't know, Counselor Irwin as the liaison, if you had anything you wanted to?
I've just attended the last three or four meetings and it's been really, I'm not sure whether, keep thinking of, it's been like rewarding to see, it's really focused on making sure that the funds are invested well and it's careful and methodical and community-focused and definitely, I mean stewardship is the right word. It really felt to me like decisions were made with intention in order to remain, to keep that integrity, but also to make sure that it's benefiting as many people as possible. And I thought that was pretty remarkable that it wasn't, I feel like sometimes those things are either focused on retaining assets for stability or create like kind of crazy giving, but it was this really patient, methodical attempt to do, or not even really an attempt, but kind of a, yeah, a well-balanced decision. And that's kind of what stuck out with me.
You definitely are in chat.
Yeah.
Right?
Counselor Salza, I saw.
Just forward to Counselor Crocker's comment. And do you have like a presence at the, like the farmer's market or anything like that where you head out, out the community to say, here we are?
Yeah, so we're doing more of that. We have a banner, so we put it up with the music in the park and.
Okay, okay.
Rodeo has the banner and last year, the Fullomet Community Foundation sponsored the fireworks and so there was kind of a shout out there. So we're doing what we can to do within a group of volunteers to be out in the community and support things, yes, to make awareness. It's actually about awareness.
And the reason by bringing that up is that given that we have a presence at things like the farmer's market, it may be appropriate that we can have some of your literature on our table at the farmer's market. So because that's just another point and that would be any sort of thing like this in our community that we are out there as a public presence and.
Great idea. We love that.
Happy, I know I'm speaking behalf of a larger group here, but I think we would all be very happy to support what you're on to.
Well, I'll say thank you too. Thanks so much for being here and for the presentation and for all the work you do. And I think I shared this anecdote at a previous meeting, just where I'm also on our county library board and we were talking about the renovation to the library in Carvalis. And someone mentioned, you know, we're thinking about doing the renovation to the library here in Fullomet. And they were like, well, you know, that'll be challenging because Fullomet just doesn't have like, you know, any kind of foundation that could like house the funds or anything. And I was like, excuse me. So I think you're doing great work, but yes, I think we can all help get the word out and make sure people know about the good word. So thank you so much. Thanks for being here.
Keep this in mind as a council, what we can do to help.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Excuse me. Okay. Now we're back to our supplemental budget. So we're going to open a public hearing on the supplemental fiscal year 2024-2025 city budget. And then I got a note here, we have two people, I think, potentially signed up for the, well, one of them is for public comment. Well, okay. Who's here for the public hearing on the budget? Okay, okay. And who's here just for unrelated public comment? Okay. Hanson, do you know which, are you, you're here for just normal public comment? Okay. Great. Then we will invite Levi Miller up. Then we will invite Levi Miller up to the table to offer your testimony on the supplemental budget. And if you can try to limit your comments to about three minutes, then there'll be a chance for councilors to ask their own questions.
Yep. Mainly, I just wanted to come give you guys an update of the work that I've done from the previous meeting. Here is some pictures of the concrete gutter that we put and... Well, I want to pass one around. That work was done last Friday. We're about 80% done. The original, I didn't get the whole thing poured on Friday. Is it's about 800 feet long, so we had to pour from both directions, which required drilling out, you know, 400, 500 feet of three-inch concrete hose. About 4 o'clock on Friday, the guys were all passed out. So, we called the last two trucks off because it was just excruciatingly... They were exhausted. And so, we've rescheduled the remaining pour for coming Monday at 9:30 to do them. So, that will be finished up on Monday. The plan was to do it last Friday, but like I said, with the heat and everything, we just physically couldn't get it done. And then I tried to make a photocopy of this, but it didn't scan at all. This is a receipt for $20,000 for pipe that I've purchased. I circled the dollar amount there. That is for the storm bypass trenching crossing. That was also part of the stuff that we need to get Phase 3 going. So, basically, this is just... I just want to show that the $39,000 of the city has already given in SDCs. 100% of the money went to those two. Went to A, the trench, the concrete gutter, and then also to procure the pipe. So, I just want to show the city that, you know, I evolved through my commitments. And with the... I'll go up locally tonight. There are many funds that I'm asking for. I can get everything else taken care of in the next couple of weeks, and we can get some loose ends wrapped up and get into Phase 3 and get the park done and get this project to, you know, get where it needs to be.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Levi? And again, this is a little different because in the past, Levi was here as an invited presenter, whereas now we're doing a public hearing. So, we can do sort of clarifying questions, but this shouldn't be a back-and-forth discussion during a public hearing. But any clarifying questions for the speaker? I can see Counselor Crocker's gears. Well, you can... The council will be able to discuss during our discussion on the resolution, but this is just the public hearing. If it's more discussion-related, it can wait, but yeah. Yes, Counselor Crocker?
Do you have the approval and timeline for the underneath the...
The plans have been submitted.
About a week and a half ago.
Yep. And I'm just waiting for the approval. I am ready to go. I can start immediately. That's the pipe is procured. If I got approval tomorrow, I can start by Thursday. I mean, there's no one in this room or town who wants this done more than me. I know a lot of people have been waiting for me, but as soon as that pipe, as soon as I get the go-ahead, I will put that bypass trench in, get the Willa Lane ditch filled, and get it done. So, that's already one for me right now. I mean, the last homes that we're building are on punch lists, so we have nothing to do right now except for doing that bypass trenching, getting the road paved, and getting Willa Lane ditch filled. That's the only thing we have left to do right now before moving to Phase 3. I mean, we're ready to do it.
I have something else to say, but cut me off if I'm inappropriate.
If it's more for the council, then if you can just hold it until the deliberations on the resolution.
Okay.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions for the speaker? Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. We don't have anyone else signed up for the public hearing on the budget. I just want to do one last call if anyone's here for the public hearing on the supplemental budget. Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing on the supplemental budget. I'm assuming there's no one online. Okay. Perfect. Which then means that now the council can move on to discussing the supplemental budget, Resolution 25-10. And I will turn it over to our finance director to walk us through the staff report and the resolution.
In front of you is Resolution 25-10. It's the final supplemental budget for the 24-25 fiscal year. Background on this is this is the time of year we go through all of our budgets and project out. We also knew what we used during the budget process, and we checked the numbers. So, you'll hear me say, we use this number or this number, but trying to make sure which in the right direction, what number we used. Attachment A is the page is 7/11, 7 through 11. And it shows the dollar amount. So, I mean, I'm going to be talking about numbers for the general fund land building, but they show on 7 through 11, if you need to go back there. First thing that we had, and we also did the budget process. We projected that we were going to have an increase in the bus operations. The ARPA money has gone away. So, the money, our budget increase has gone 64,000, we're projecting this year. And Chris and I hoped we fixed it last year for next year. But, you know, we're kind of probably going to be working with the city of Corvallis, figure out what's going on there. But, you know, we're at least taking care of it for this year. We're projecting 64,000. So, I'm going to increase that and decrease contingency. All these contingency decreases, I built them into the budget. It's already taken into effect. So, there won't be nothing changing in our budget that I'm bringing to the council on the 23rd. And then we're going to transfer 28,200 to the land billing and equipment fund for police vehicles. A sure expensive outfit anymore. Dave's got a new vehicle. We're going to put $22,000 into it this year. So, we didn't anticipate that cost. So, I'm going to reduce contingency there. Then we found out that we got a bill from the utility company that they quite kind of late, about $3,000 or $4,000 for starting up the Starlight pump station. So, we're going to fix that. And then one of the police department's computers went the blue screen of death, and so we've got to replace that. So, we're going to be moving that 28,000 in contingency and transferring it out to the land billing and equipment, LBE. So, then we go to the land billing and equipment. I'll go right down the funds. So, if you can follow it within the test way if you'd like. So, you'll see the land billing and equipment, we're going to increase that by 28,200. And we're going to split it up between eight vehicle line item, that's 1, 2, 3. Water infrastructure, we're going to increase that by 4,000. And police equipment, we're going to increase that by 1,900. So, that'll bring that one to alignment. Turning the page, on page 4. The water projection, the water we're looking at, we looked at the budget going forward. We used for part of the budget process, we projected that it would be probably over. Looking at the numbers right before I created it, they're pretty much right in line. It's going to be over, over expenditure by $95,000. And we've got six line items that we're going to fix. And I was told by my staff when they reviewed this, it's not Rocky Creek, it's Rock Creek. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's been in your system forever. So, anyway. So, you'll see little things like that we'll have to fix. We're limited in size, so the names we have to truncate. So, anyway, we're going to increase the line items, equipment, your place net, Rock Creek, system supplies, creek chemicals, water infrastructure, and utilities by 95,000, and reduce contingency by 95,000. Also, within water, the UTE towers, the census, I believe it's called, they are now operational. So, I think we talked about this during the budget. I brought in, they put it over in LBE, the annual maintenance costs. That is now part of operation, so I had to move it over here. So, I'm going to move contingency to offset. So, that's what happens there with water. And like I said, all these contingency moves, they've been built into the budget. I anticipated on. Moving on to wastewater. Somehow, I've got a difference between principal and interest, so I'm doing an allocation between the two, just screening them out. Interest was, the number was 5,000 short, so we're going to increase, decrease contingency, increase principal line item to bring all of those around. The next one is SDCs governmental. That's what Levi was just talking about. Council was approved, approved a refund. This is the budget adjustment that we're going to create for it. And so, we're going to increase contingency and increase park line. I'm using 40,000 just to keep it in memory. The 39,000 has already gone out the door. And I think the last thing I have is pretty lengthy. It's the SDC proprietary item. Council discussed purchasing back 185,000 storm drain SDC credits from MBC builders. This requires an increase in the line item storm drain improvement material category in an offset to contingency of 185. Finance staff has some concerns about this, about the outstanding balances MBC currently has with the city. There's a total of 12 outstanding SDCs on seven home properties. The principal balance is 357,000, which does not include the interest that's accrued to date. When the houses are sold, the company collects, title company collects the proceeds from sale and sentences the burden, stuff to the city and moving it to the neighborhood. Of those 12 lees, we have one that's been outstanding. The property changed hands. It's no longer owned by MBC, but the city was never paid for it. And attorney, our city attorney, Jim Brewer, said do not release that until this is rectified. This sounds like there's some kind of error in the title company reports somewhere in there. We've notified both parties, MBC, and we've notified the property owner that there's an issue here, and they have to file their claim. We can't do it. The previous, prior to this, there was two of these. One of them did file a claim, and we were paid. So, we still have one that's outstanding. It's, I can't release it until we're paid. Also, the Plan Review Budget, which is Development Review Fund. It's in the negative hole right now, 15,500. Part of these proceeds, 18,000 would be brought in to the city, and we bring it to the park to release. Another item is utility bills. We're not being paid on a continuous basis. So, when that happens, Chris told us to shut it off and lock it. And so, we have, and so we had a balance of 37, almost 3,800, which was paid this past Friday. And so, all the accounts are now current. And one of the reasons that we have 12 lees on seven properties, city manager allowed the shift of SDCs from one property to another. City, the city attorney approved it, but, you know, finance staff said, no, we didn't do it. The only reason why, because it gets pretty gnarly when you start doing it. It went from three to six to nine to 12. It takes us four hours to do all this stuff. So, city managers directed this to not do this anymore. We're no longer going to shift SDCs. Made my staff happy and me happy because it is, it is, it is a chore. Anyway, last thing that I wanted to say. SDCs really have no monetary value to the city. The usual credits, they're applied to SDCs. And the SDCs, they move forward with the project. Once the project goes away, that credit goes away, and there's no final payout to anybody. So, we've got two or three different motions on page six. Oppose the purchase, that's the first one, 1A. 1B is, that was, you go forward with it, but we have, there's a different motion. I've given it to the mayor because it's a different fund. It's not governmental. It's the proprietary fund. So, there's those two motions. And then the last thing that we have to do, if you go with 1B, you've got to do 2A. You've got to get the attachment A as part of this document.
So, if we do 1A, we don't have to do 2A?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
There's a lot of data.
Just make sure that I'm really crystal clear on it. So, if the council is opposed to purchasing the MBC credits of 185,000, then essentially, we are taking out a piece of Appendix A. Is that right? That says something about that.
Yes.
We strike that part, but everything else remains intact. If we are in favor of it, we have to then amend the main part of the resolution.
Yes.
But it's already in Appendix A, so we're going to say we're going to take Appendix A as written. And then it becomes a kind of a two-part... Is it two separate motions then?
Pretty much, yeah.
You know, really, I mean, one, you can't do one without the other anyway.
Combine them if you want.
Combine them and they're the same.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's why I wanted to clarify that.
You're on the right track, counselor.
Thank you.
Just really quick before, does that... I know this is a weird sort of structure here. Does that make sense to folks? I've seen Counselor Crocker's head move both side to side and up and down. Okay. Yes, got it.
I feel like we probably don't need some of the budget committee meetings, but, you know, trying to connect the dots here. The increase in outfitting the new police vehicle, was that just a like inflation thing? Or, and because you said that's taken into account for future...
For future, yeah.
That was the inflation thing?
When we started last year with the police vehicles, we put basically $50,000. That was aed up root. That was just gone when you bought the vehicle. So, we had to backfill the outfitting of it.
Just wanted to make sure that that was the...
No, we talked about it. We did it right, but, you know, we've, one thing we forgot was the outfitting. Sometimes you can carry that stuff forward. Sounds like nowadays, you can do that.
And then, thank you for having that list for the SDCs about what it was, what happened in order to have that many, that much in credits. Because I definitely did not understand how that had happened. And thank you for putting a policy in place to make sure that doesn't happen.
We will also put one together on SDC funds also.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And then one more question, if that's okay. For the Rock Creek, that's the inner tie. Did we, right? That's the... So, are we buying more water than pass, than we have in the past? Just...
Yeah, we've had more plant repairs, and we've had to rely on the inner tie more often than we'd...
Oh, because you have to shut it down? Gotcha. Okay, cool. Thanks.
It was not necessarily the total water usage is way up or something.
No, water usage is pretty steady overall. I mean, number of units. Mike's probably more familiar with the number I am, but number of units aren't going through the roof. It's just...
Right.
That lineup specifically is having to shut down our plant for repairs and having to purchase more water from Corvallis.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Yeah, Counselor Neilson?
Could you help clarify in my head how number three on page five relates to this buying back, purchasing the 185? So, number three on page five talks about a...
What I was doing is look at the financial, the outstanding balance. MBC owes the city. And that's what I looked at. The SDCs, the Plan Review, that's pretty, that's something we need to watch.
Right.
Plus the utilities, and I can't think. I think that's it. Those are three things that I, we look at, we track for anybody that has a big balance. We want to know what the whole balance is.
But we won't take those into account when we're going to be purchasing the 185? How does that relate?
We're going to set, it's been agreed, it sounds like, with MBC that of the 185, 18,000 will go to the Development Review Fund to bring this into compliance. They're not supposed to be negatives. And 15,000 is just too big. So, I had to bring that to everybody's attention.
So, do we have to vote on? I mean, it says the staff recommends, but it does, does a council vote? Or is that just a decision that's made?
That will be your motions.
Yeah, you're welcome to take anything into account or not. I guess just the other piece on that, like the way partly that I read that is if we're, if the... I guess just the other piece on that, like, the way partly that I read that is if we're, if the council does cut a check for a hundred eighty-five thousand, the recipient of the check could do with that what they wish. And part of what that could be would be paying eighteen thousand dollars. Like, even if the council doesn't approve using eighteen thousand of that hundred eighty-five thousand to pay the negative review balance, the person, the recipient of the funds could still do that.
Yeah.
He is first and then either remainder out.
Yeah, all that the council would be voting on with this would just be to cut a check for a hundred eighty-five thousand to.
Pretty much.
The developer, and.
Everything behind the scenes will happen.
Yeah.
This is true, I think this may be because you, you weren't here at the.
Yeah, I wasn't there that last.
It was part of the conversation we were having to kind of do some clarifications of.
Right.
Things that weren't completely clear at that point. And this, and he's done a, you've done a great job of kind of beating this forward. So we understand, yes, but it's also gonna cure some things to our benefit also.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
And, yeah, I'll just echo that, but I am very grateful for Mike. I think it's important that the council has the full picture and all the information when we're making a decision. So, uh, I appreciate that, by councillor Crocker.
Yeah, I have to clarify this and forgive me if I say it wrong, but the eighteen thousand, it seems like we should take that off the one eighty-five and then return the test rather than hoping that he's going to pay us the eighteen thousand because you said that has to be done to go on.
I would say that's a good point. I mean, we could go ahead and do that. We could move the money out of that fund over to the.
Deduct it.
Deduct it out of that.
Pay that off.
I think the city manager would like to check.
Yeah, it's hard to believe in that, he's fine with that. I mean, whether he cuts the check or we just withhold it from that, that's in the end. He's in agreement that we need to get that negative balance up and we'll put a little bit to there. The, the rest of, um, there for that review fund is he still has the storm pipe to put in. And so that fund goes towards the review of the documents of when they first get submitted and our engineer has to review them. But it also goes towards inspections and then post-construction, there's an inspection. So the engineer, city engineer is still gonna send us a bill for some work to get done for phase two. So we wanna make sure we've got a little bit of balance in there, so we've bumped it up to that eighteen thousand. So we've got some more money for the engineer to go out and do those final inspections to finish off phase two B. When we move into phase three, there'll be an additional calculation that's, gets done by the engineers to figure out what's the cost of all the new infrastructure for phase three. And there'll be a new four percent deposit that we collect before we move into phase three. This is really just sort of wrapping up phase two. But yeah, if we just take that off the top of the one eighty-five minus eighteen, and that's the check that we cut to MPC. Um, MPC's fine with that, they've already, they've already agreed that that's, that's fine, yeah.
And I want to clarify on the liens. Are we comfortable? Is that something that the owner or at the sale of the house, the lien money's going to come back to us?
Yes.
And we don't need to worry about that because that's actually gonna happen?
As far, yes, now that there's, there's shipping allowed, yes, that money's coming back to us.
Legally, there's no other way around it, it's just going to come passing.
Right.
Okay. Although we didn't have it, the one house that switched in. But the one house, the twenty-seven thousand, is that taken care of or is it? The twenty-seven thousand one hundred forty-eight dollar, the one lien?
No, councillor, it has not been rectified, it's still outstanding.
And who is being held responsible for that?
The owner of the house currently, um, but, you know, it's, it's under MPC's name. We're attached to a piece of property.
Sure. But our, was the owner properly, um, informed?
Yes.
At the purchase?
We did that, I did that myself. We've talked to both parties involved here, this is years ago, then when we discovered it. And we took care of one of the two.
I think, if I may, just interject, just to help guide the discussion. Are, just, are we all good with everything except, um, the hundred eighty-five thou? Like, is there any other discussion on anything else in the supplemental budget besides the potential SDC credit purchase? Just so we can kind of set that aside if there's no other concerns with that. Okay, then let's keep diving in. Yeah, Chris?
Just to address the question on the, the one SDC that I'll say got missed by the title company. I mean, our, our process is pretty clear. We file a lien, it goes there, before they close the property, the title company runs a search on the title. All of the liens pop up, they note them, when they go to closing. If you bought a house, you see everything that's getting paid, everything's getting paid by the seller, everything's being paid by the buyer. And that's where those liens would show up. For whatever reason, this case, it didn't show up, we never got the check, the lien stayed on the property, property changed hands. Um, I did talk to Levi about this one specifically. And it, it really is need to look, be looked into by the homeowner, the new homeowner. You know, when a, when a purchaser buys a property, they purchase title insurance to make sure that title is clear. And when a seller sells a property, they also have to buy a title insurance policy to make sure it's clear. And when it doesn't happen and there's a mistake that happens, you typically look to the title insurance policy and say, you screwed up. Or you go to the title company and say, you screwed up. But you don't typically look to the owner or the seller and say, you guys screwed up and didn't get paid. So we really do need to have the owner to resolve this. The owner needs to file a claim with the insurance or follow up with the title company and see what happened. Levi is convinced that that money was there and did get, get put into closing because there was a construction loan that included the construction and those SDC payments. And all that money went to escrow, so it may just be a clerical error that needs to be addressed. But again, it's not the city's, we don't have the power to go in and do anything. And frankly, the previous owner doesn't really have the power to go in and do anything. It is up to the current owner and they're the ones that are accruing that interest every year. So, you know, I can make another effort to reach out to them and just let them know that they really do need to get this addressed. It's not just gonna go on its own. But it's not, you know, it's, it's an outstanding SDC lien, it's not really something I would hold against MPC at this point. It's just an anomaly that needs to get addressed by the property owner, hasn't been yet, so.
That's our case, man?
Yeah, so there's a, a phrase that I like, multivariate equation. It just sounds good to the ear. So, I, I think this, like everything else in life, life is a multivariate equation. I can't claim to know all the facts, I haven't been here since the beginning of the project. I, none of us know everything about the project, but I just wanted to quickly summarize my experience since I've been on the council and, and maybe my thoughts along with that. So with, uh, the refund of the SDC fees for sewer? Park, park, so thank you, thank you, park, I should have checked, pardon. When we talked about that and I reviewed it, it seemed like it, it was a change in methodology. So that seemed, and, and I voted yes for that. And it seemed like this is where a city does wanna be friendly to developers. And if there's a change in methodology, maybe it wasn't handled perfectly by either party, but that seemed a reasonable thing to my ears and my eyes, I voted yes for that. When it came to buying the credits that is now a hundred eighty-five thousand, I did vote no on that. I think I was the only one that voted no on that, maybe I wanted to talk about that a little bit or explain that a little bit. Like I said, I don't know all of the facts, some of it can be gut level or whatever else. It, it seemed to start with the SDC for the parks. And then at the very tail end, there was, oh, there's gonna be another thing, which will be for seventy thousand for, um, for the SDC credits. And then in that same meeting, it seemed to grow to one eighty-five. And I just started to feel uncomfortable about how that felt at a gut level. I didn't know all of the details, I'm, I'm a layman to sell too many of these things, but something about that just, I, I like to slow down a little bit. And then so looking at some of the, the concerns from finance in terms of, there was the shifting of SDCs to other properties, the credits, the buying back credits, it begins to feel that the city's too invested in it. I think there's a difference between being friendly to developers and something about it just feels too invested. But once again, it's a multivariate equation, so my plan is I, I don't support buying the credits. So there we are.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any more discussion on this?
Sorry, I wasn't there at that one meeting, but you did need to clarify. Since there is an outstanding utility bills, could that be deducted from the one eighty-five as well?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I see that, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Question though?
Alright.
Well, any, any further thoughts or questions or discussion on this? Or of course, motions, I guess, how's the rest of the council feeling?
I'm sorry, did we, did we decide that we were going to, the possibility of adjusting the hundred eighty-five thousand to a hundred sixty-seven thousand?
I think the, I think we would still do the hundred eighty-five thousand out of, like, I don't think that would necessarily affect the budget because we'd still be taking a hundred eighty-five.
We're still gonna be doing that number. It's still gonna be one eighty-five, we're gonna reduce that, uh, when we cut the check. And I will move that, uh, via a general engineer.
Like, administratively?
Yeah.
Administratively, it happens, okay, got it.
We would still need to remove.
We don't have to do anything.
From the SDC fund, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's all I wanted to make sure.
Sure. Yeah.
Is this the time to talk about the one eighty-five?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I would like to talk about this.
Councillor Crocker?
I am still very much in favor of cutting it in half, giving him half, seeing progress. We can specify the progress, whether it's the, um, pipes underneath Chapel Drive or finishing this. I wanna see progress. And the reason I'm concerned is because of several things. The fact that this was, uh, three thousand seven hundred fifty-five in, in arrears and it just got paid tells me there's a history of not necessarily paying the stuff. Promises, I have a citizen that I know of that, uh, you set some appointments with and did not show up for the appointments. That's not showing a good process, uh, to, to accomplish things. And you talked about, when you first told me that you had, uh, begun the initial, uh, talk with ODOT about the road, you indicated that you had started this long ago and you were just waiting for ODOT. But then later, I found out that ODOT was actually waiting for your plans. And it was your plan that just got in a couple of weeks ago. And I was given the impression that you had already done all of that. Maybe my impression was wrong, maybe that was on me, but I, when I asked you, have you begun this process? And you said, oh, yes, long, long ago. And I'm just waiting for ODOT, but you, ODOT couldn't do anything until you had actually submitted the plans to get approved. So I was uncomfortable hearing that. Please correct me if I'm wrong on any of these facts. I just, I believe your intentions are very good, but the follow-through is something that I am not seeing. And I would like to encourage you to follow through on some of this before you get the second half. I believe that's a motivator. I don't believe it's, um, a penalty. I think it's just saying, please show us that you're actually gonna follow through and get this work done and then we can give you the rest. And I am not comfortable with giving the whole hundred eighty-five thousand at this point because of the many times where that I feel like you haven't followed or misled me.
Thank you, I, you just wanna note for our decorum rules that, um, we should keep all of our comments towards the members of the council.
People, sorry.
Unless if we have someone up at the, um, Gias. Yes. Chris, oh, yeah, Chris.
Just to respond, I guess, to split, because that got brought up at the last meeting a little bit. So I did have conversations with Mr. Miller about what that would look like, if that was an option that we could do to give some more ease to the council and the recommendation. The, the street, um, there's a, a grind for all of Sixteenth Street and then a complete overlay of that existing street that needs to be done. The contractor's gotta have cash in hand before that gets scheduled. And scheduling, according to Mr. Miller, is gonna be three to four weeks out. So that money's gonna be needed and be spent as soon as it's in his hands. The eighteen thousand dollar pipe that was ordered is the first payment of about a third of the pipe. The other two-thirds still needs to be ordered, gotta have cash in hand to order that as well. So my concern is if, if we're gonna withhold the money, when are we withholding it to? And if we're withholding it, say, the ninety thousand, which was what we've been told is for the street, and then we're gonna wait three to four weeks till the street gets done and then have a report back. Then it gets more money, then he can order the pipe. We've just lost three weeks, so the pipe could have been ordered and on its way here and be getting worked on. So what I've heard from Mr. Miller is there's things that he needs the money for today that he'll spend the money on as soon as he has it to get pipe ordered, to get the road scheduled. And the only thing that delaying to give the funds, the full amount of funds for, is going to do is delay finishing up phase two of the project. So, you know, I, I'd ask the council to consider that. What we're really looking at is if we're gonna purchase those credits, the SDC credits, we're knocking that balance off of, um, the balance off of that fund that he has. And the money to get to the project is gonna infuse the project. And I think, again, I would argue, if we're looking at most recent trends, what we've heard from Mr. Levi this evening is that he's spending, spending the money that the council's been giving to my SDCs on the project. So I, you know, neither here nor there, again, I just want the council to be aware, I did have that conversation, what would that look like to break it up? And what it looks like is it would just delay ordering the pipe and/or ordering the road to get done, one of those two. And the whole point of doing this was to get money into the project now so we can move forward and get out of phase two sooner rather than waiting for houses to sell over the next two to three to four months and getting that money coming in that they can, he, he could then use towards the project, so. For what that's worth, I don't know, splitting the project is gonna save any time, it's just gonna delay things further.
I totally understand what you're saying and that does make sense. Where's our guarantee that he's gonna take the money and get this going in the next three months? That's my concern, based on some past history.
Yeah, but we, we've never had a guarantee and we'll never get a guarantee from a developer. The, the only thing that we have is what is the motivate, what are the motivating factors? And I think that's what I would look at with Millpon Crossing, is what are motivating factors to get the street done and get the pipe done? Every incentive that the developer has at this point is to finish phase two and move into phase three where the project can turn a corner, actually start being profitable for it, until that happens. Where in phase two, it's all expense. And so I just don't see the, I don't see the benefit of not spending that money that we give him for the project on the project publicly. It would crucify him, right? I mean, why, why would we ever do anything to help Millpon Crossing again? Extend a deadline, extend a permit fee? Why would we ever do anything again if the money wasn't a hundred percent spent on the development? I, I think that's the only incentive I can point to, but there are no guarantees.
So are we still saying that he is not gonna proceed with state, you know, phase three until Sixteenth Street is done and the thing for chap, the sewer line across Chapel is done and the ditch behind Willow is done? And, um, are, are we saying all of that is gonna be done before phase three begins? Or are we saying we're gonna put that off in hopes that they'll get done before phase three is done? I mean, I mean, where are we at? Because I, I want more than anything to think positive that these things are gonna be done, that the things that we are waiting to be completed before phase three begins will actually be done. That our word and his word will have some credence and some.
It's a good, it's a fair question. And I, I guess the way I'm looking at this and my approach, which was probably helpful to share, is we have Flometh residents living on Sixteenth Street. We have houses for sale on Sixteenth Street that, you know, people are, have applications into purchase right now. They've got, you know, purchase agreements and that they're looking to buy these homes and become Flometh residents. I'm concerned about things in phase two that aren't done yet. I'm holding my breath and waiting for phase three and I'm excited for phase three. I hope we will get there. Everything in this is about finishing up phase two and phase two B. Getting the street done, getting the storm pipe. The storm pipe needs to go in so that all that stormwater doesn't have to go down the back of Willow Lane and Timothy and that was, that ditch can get filled in. What we're hearing is that can't get filled in, even in the middle of summer, we're not filling that ditch until the storm pipe gets put in. It needs money for the storm pipe, so we can wait for houses to sell. Or you can get some money now, get the storm pipe ordered and get it going in now, then it's home sell, that rolls over into the next phase. So this is all about phase two needing to get completed and those items in phase two getting done before we move on to phase three. We just did a minor modification approval to change what used to be phase three. Was different, it's now configured differently, so phase three is now kind of southern portion of phase four, northern. It's a minor modification that got approved. And with that, Public Works and Benton County all went through an approval of phase three and what infrastructure would be qualified as phase three and what would be phase four. The only nuance to it is the storm pipe because it's in the area of phase three. All that storm pipe isn't in phase two B. It was supposed to be in phase two B, but it. It was supposed to be in phase two B, but it didn't get put in the street, it got bumped out. It's now gonna be physically in phase three. And so it's going to get done before the infrastructure of phase three gets done, but it's actually getting done in the area of phase three. So it's a little semantics, but the storm swell, which we just saw pictures of tonight, was on the list, that'll be done. The street will be done and the inf, the storm water infrastructure will be done before we move into what we have known as phase three, which is the water lines, the key lines in the streets are gonna support the new houses in phase three. None of that gets started until these phase two B things get finished up, so.
Backup question, um so you under, as far as your knowledge, Mr. Miller's aware of the requirements for two B, what needs to be done prior to beginning? And he's in agreement and understanding that there'll be no progress toward that three B, three or three D part until all of those things in two B are completed.
Yeah, the the outstanding items that are there, um I think the one, I'll call it the big one, but the one that we have the least control of is the lot line adjustments that need shifted. Um Mr. Miller, and I've said this before, has been pretty upfront, like, hey, when we're ready to spend the money, let me know. We've been trying to work with homeowners, there's a lot of moving parts there, cause there's a lot of different homeowners. It's a confusing process, most people don't go through this process ever. Just contacting the mortgage company and letting them know what's happening and knowing the right language to tell them and getting the documents ready so they sign off on the lot line adjusting and get new surveys and new legal descriptions and all that. And it's it's taken some time, we haven't made much progress. We've made more progress in the last two or three months, which is good, and I think we'll get there. Um a week from tonight, actually, we're gonna have a variance with the planning commission um where they're looking to reduce the city's requirement for five-foot sideline, um five-foot side yard setback, which has been where these lot lines need to be adjusted is cause some of them are three foot, some are six foot, some are eight foot. So we're trying to get all of those to be at least five foot. We've got the one situation where one of the property owners didn't agree to have their fence line moved or the prop line moved so that both neighbors would have at least that five foot. And so in that situation, you got a property owner, they, their property is compliant, their neighbor's property is not compliant and they don't wanna give up some of their land so the neighbor's compliant. So what do you do? Well, fortunately, it's at least more than the three foot, the actual setback right now is four foot, one inches, not the five foot that we want. But to do that, it's a type C variance, it has to go to the planning commission for the planning commission to review it and allow for a four-foot, one-inch setback instead of a five-foot setback. So the city's bending, saying, look, we'll do this type C variance, we'll take it to the planning commission, we'll get their approval on it, try to get their approval on it. And once we get that one done, then the other neighbors further down south are all in favor of the lot line adjustments. And so they'll, once this one's done with the variance, those others will start falling in line. Those are gonna take some time still. I I don't necessarily wanna wait on infrastructure, planning and development of phase three until every single one of these twelve lot lines are adjusted, but we will be looking to Mr. Miller and Millpon Crossing to put some money either into a secured account, an escrow account, something. So there's a pot of money that either he can get to or the city can get to directly to pay for things like new legal descriptions, um appraisals when they get done, that sort of bit. So um he won't come out of phase two B um unscathed. We're gonna keep some pot of money and I don't know what that number is yet, but we'll keep some money set aside for lot line adjustments, make sure if there's money for all that to be taken care of. But to me, it doesn't make sense, again, to wait on phase three until every single one of those lot lines gets adjusted. That could take another couple of years. Um but there will be money to make sure that that's, those are getting addressed and when the property owners are ready to adjust those lines and they did.
And that, sorry, I wanna get everything clarified. So that line that was on two B, the sewer line that you said was moved to three.
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer line, yes. So was that um in the city's benefit to put that off to to three instead of having it done as part of two?
No, it was in the original plans for phase two. Uh phase two was Sixteenth Street, both sides, um was the original phase two. Um that was not the city's um uh the city did not approve that, the the street got paved before the storm line got put in. And once the street was paved, it was like, well, we gotta tear up a brand new street or we can look for an alternative. The city engineer agreed, said, if you can have your engineers come up with an alternative and where that storm channel could go instead, then we'll look at it. And so there was an agreement verbally at that time, get us a new plan, we'll review it and we'll let you do that in a later phase. The storm, just again to put out there, that storm channel isn't picking up water from the development. It's picking up all the water from north of development, it's coming off of the school and Seventeenth Street and all of that pools right out of the north, that's very south into Seventeenth Street, kinda by the Public Works Yard. That's where it sets and it went from there, traditionally for many years now, it's gone from there down Willow to Fifteenth Street and all the way down Fifteenth and then it's kinda under Chapel Drive out that direction. With the new development and Fifteenth Street, the decision was when the phases were being developed that a new storm channel to, like two thirty-inch pipes would be put down Sixteenth Street to convey all that water from the north in the property, down through the property and out, not picking up water from the existing or the new homes, just to convey the existing water flow. That's what got moved, that was those two thirty-inch pipes never got installed. I'm sure it was a financial reason, pretty expensive part of the project. They got moved to a future phase, they weren't designed, they weren't developed, nothing was approved. Um but Millpon made the decision to go and pave that street so we can get starting houses to go for sale so we could move that down the road, that was punted on. And so since that time, we've been waiting for this storm conveyance channel to get installed. That's the eighteen thousand dollars with the pipe that just got ordered, there's more that needs to be ordered. I think about two-thirds, my numbers might be wrong there, but I think that eighteen was about a third of the total cost um of all the pipe and and things needed there. So that storm channel, again, that's what's kept Timothy from getting paid, you know, the ditch from getting done, all of these things we've been waiting on for the last three plus years, it's all been delayed because that storm pipe didn't go in. And really, I mean, be honest, we've not seen a lot of development at all happen in the last two, three years. It's just been stalled out with the exception of a few homes on this east side of Sixteenth Street most recently. So that's the storm channel needs to be installed, that will be installed before it's finished cause that supports the phase two development that was supposed to have been wrapped up.
So that's gonna be done prior to?
The road and that storm conveyance are the the two big ticket items need to be done before I can move on. And then the lot line adjustments is kind of a side, side.
And Mr. Miller's aware of that?
Okay, Councilor Andrade.
So I am begrudgingly in favor of doing this based on my understanding, cause I will say, Councilor Crocker, that I completely agree with you. In our last conversation about this topic, uh we learned about how um they began filling in the ditch and then had to stop because the city found out and said, whoa, 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 you're supposed to do something else first. And it's just, it's example after example of not doing due diligence. Now, I hope that they have learned their lesson and that things moving forward will go a bit smoother. Um but I was curious that, again, like, I don't, I don't know, we haven't had this kind of situation before where we've had credits and potentially needing to buy them back. So what would the the financial, like, what does it look like if we didn't buy them back? Like, how much in trouble would the city be? Because like, if you're looking at it from that standpoint, I wonder if, like, you know, regardless of whether or not you think that that um the MPC shouldn't get the refund or not the refund, the credit, like have money back from the credits, like.
Consequences.
Yeah. If we didn't do it, do we have worse consequences for the city and its financials and such? Okay, I was just confused because of the whole, or it was more the time situation you're talking about. So it's more of a uh just a time and energy sink. So technically, cause you said it took like, what, four hours or something?
Yeah, when we do, sell, when we do our deferrals, that have the buybacks, a totally different. That's, that's over here on this, this channel.
Okay.
It's not even in our books.
Gotcha.
Uh SDCs now, they're in our books. Even if it's old and then now that they, we can't shift it, it's, we're gonna get the money.
So.
It has nothing to do with that credit.
So I guess my question is, is if there are credits still, like, if he still has credits by the end of the project, does he get them back? Like, do we pay?
You're buying it out.
It's just.
It all goes away, you're too blind.
That's interesting. Thank you for clarifying, I definitely misunderstood that.
Thank you, Councilor, um Councilor Irwin?
I have a couple of quick questions, but now I'm worried I misunderstood it if I did follow what you just told Councilor Andrade. Can you say that again for me to start with?
Okay.
Yeah.
Those are on the city's books, I have to pay, I book those every time it happens. The SDC credit that you're purchasing is over on MPC books. We, all we have is a list of what we've applied that to and and it's a running list, that's not, I don't book that. So there's no monetary value, that's why I brought that, this is, there's no monetary value.
Right.
Is that helpful, Councilor?
Yes.
There's no question.
And these are represented in this first section, the current outstanding one?
Those are the ones that we have, those are our, that's our money when those are settled.
And they're leaned on, are they owned by SDCs or uh, there's a lot of acronyms here, Millpon Crossing? Or are they owned by?
Lean on the property. The properties are owned by.
And they're, these are vacant. To be sold, Millpon, okay, okay.
Those are the fees that are owed when you build a property for payment of those fees on the property.
Right, and am I to understand correctly that we've moved them in the past to other properties because it makes it difficult to finance the property?
So some of the liens that were there on properties, um Millpon came and said that they needed to refinance some of the homes because they were taking either longer to build, there are delays in the construction process or delays in selling, or the case might be they needed to refinance those properties, individual lots, like three of them at start. We've got three properties, we have to refinance them. When they refinance them, they show up on the title, it's like, hey, there's this lien on the property. Well, if you have to pay off the lien when you refinance, you don't get any revenue coming in that you can inject into the project. And so rather than have the liens get paid during the refinance, we transfer the liens from one property to another property also owned by Millpon Crossing.
So in essence, reducing the margin of the future sold property for.
We would collect it then.
Okay, okay. I had one more question and uh you already said why you did that and why you did that. And so if we, so the credits are on the books as like we're as a prepayment, but if we, if we buy them back, the properties that sell in the future will be sub- subject to the SDC as normally prescribed. So.
It's like, it's like MPC has a coupon for next whatever, you know, hundred houses or whatever.
Right, 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 yeah, like a pre, so then rather than do it in one way, we said.
Think of it as individual coupons, right?
Yeah.
SDCs for storm are roughly about two thousand dollars, let's use a rough number.
Yeah.
So if you had a packet of, you know, two thousand dollar value coupons, he's got that coupon book, right? And it's full and what we're saying is let's buy a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars worth of those coupons. He's still gonna have some left, but not a lot, he's gonna run out of them quicker. Once he runs out of the coupons, now he's gotta pay cash for that storm SDC when he connects those future houses. So they're willing to be coming back. So there isn't financial value as far as on our books, but there is value to having those SDC credits. Otherwise, he would never agree to have done the storm project he did for us back.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, there was, it it's an incentive to make sure that he's building in a way that is good for the city, right, or better for the city initially. And now there's some incentive for it, something that's helpful for Millpon. I guess, okay, uh I'm a little wary of just reducing margins until there's nothing there for him to make money on anymore, but.
That's the part we're not doing anymore, so I mean, might kinda touch.
Yeah, none of them moving and, yeah.
You know, at the time, I'll I'll speak to that, cause my, you know, that was my decision, I won't make, take any heat for that, that was my decision. Um and it wasn't done half-hand, you know, half-wittedly, I mean, we looked at that, we talked to the city attorney. You know, is it legal, is something we could do? And then it was looking at the value of the properties that we were gonna transfer them over to. You know, those homes are currently selling in the four hundred fifty to five hundred thousand dollar range and we're talking about a thirty thousand dollar lien, it'll be thirty, you know, or a thirty thousand dollar lien. Um so the transfer at that time seemed prudent, right? It didn't seem like a bad call to transfer those liens from one property to another property, knowing those properties were under construction, gonna be, you know, going for sale and be sold at some point in the near future. It was when, then it was, you know, a month later and it was, hey, these, another four, I need to do the same thing. I'm getting stalled, but we're getting some progress and then it was another three. So over the course of, you know, a year and a half or so, I might have that date wrong, I'm not sure when the first one we did, but over the course of that year, year and a half, now we're looking back at the books, saying, now we've got like twelve of these now that we've done this to. Um but those homes, you know, they're up for sale now and some of them are in escrow right now, we expect to close in the next month or so. You know, so we will get paid for those. Those those liens, I don't have a lot of heartburn over because it's a lien on an asset that has value, that's going to sell at some point in the future. You know, short of the housing market completely tanking, those homes being worth zero, the the city's eventually gonna get the money from those liens. Um it's really just the the matter of principle, does somebody just knock on wood? Thank you.
Yes.
It's really just a matter, you know, the principle of transferring a lien from one property to another. And I think what we've, I think what we've decided is it's too much work for staff, there's no real benefit to the city. It really is kind of a favor to the developer to help keep a project infused with some money to keep it moving. But without any real benefit to the city, it's just too much work, it's too cumbersome. And when you get more than the original three or six, it's just a lot to track and just, you know, you're you're bound to make a mistake. You're you're constantly level checking, so we're just not gonna do it going forward. And as long as developers know that from the get-go and that's the internal policy, we won't be going down this road again. But a year and a half ago, to do three of them and transfer over, didn't seem like a big deal. Um it seemed like a rational decision to just transfer those over.
But now we know.
Let them refinance.
But now we know that it's a lot of work.
No lesson, it's more complicated, it's more.
Okay, now I have two more quick things and I promise I'll stop asking questions, I just forgot one of them.
I appreciated it step by step, so thank you.
Oh, um is there, this, and this might not be that relevant, but if they, so do five of the, wait, there's twelve liens on seven, I don't know what the math is. Do some of these have just two liens assigned to them and not a nor, not a normalized? So it was just a a clean transfer over? Okay, and I can't remember the other thing that I was gonna add, but probably not that important.
I'm sure that's not true. Uh, Councilor, if I could, on that note, who's on the, the twelve liens on seven properties, Millpon Crossing currently owns more than those seven properties. We could transfer some of those back onto properties that don't have any liens on them, cause some of the properties that got refinanced don't have any SDC liens on them at all. Millpon Crossing more than happy to have us transfer liens back over there if we wanted like one lien per household, but it's more work, it's more.
Yeah.
Why, like the house, the house is gonna sell.
Right.
We'll get both liens paid off, so that's been kind of an internal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two, it's like, are we worried that there's two liens on one property? Not really, I just want that one property to sell and then we get paid both. Or if we were that worried, if we always worried like, man, the housing market's tanking, the value may not be there, then we may be more proactive and spread it out over multiple houses. I just don't think that's the case, I think these homes will sell and we're gonna save ourselves time of having to transfer liens again for no real benefit. So again, I'm not overly concerned about the ratio of two, you know, and and we did make a conscious decision, it was two, we weren't gonna do three, right? But at two SDCs on a property, didn't seem like we were putting the city in any jeopardy of not getting those liens paid back.
Um I think I remember the last thing and I, I would just suggest. Um, I think I remember the last thing and I, I would just suggest a, a general practice of not issuing credits where there's a debit. Uh, just saying that, and we'd already talked about it in practice this time. But like, if you owe the city $18,000, I don't think you should be in a position to get a credit until, right? Like, it should always be a clean off, but that's, or nearly say, it, you know.
Sure. Um, councillor Crocker?
Um, in number five, it mentions the, uh, lien transfers not recommended by the financial staff. Is that the only part of this entire project that you are not in favor of? Or are there other problems with this whole thing?
Well, that's the.
That's the only one. And it is now never happening again. I know, because he, and you're like, well, we could.
You know, the council could make a decision on that.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Um, I, okay, I'm, I ha- I've cooked up an idea. Um, and if it's, if it's bad, Chris or Crystal, someone tell me. Um, I was just like to try, since these motions are really complicated, can we just even do like a show of hands of like, who wants to do the 185,000? Raise your hand. Who doesn't? Raise your hand. And then that can help us inform which motion we're gonna make. Does that, am I violating any kind of rules with that?
Make a motion to include the $185,000 in the supplemental budget and then.
I know I could do that, but could I just?
I think it's a problem in a council meeting.
Can you, everyone just blink twice? Um, okay, so.
A ball that'll show us a year from now what things are gonna look like.
Because I know that we're all, we're all, we are all fundamentally on this, really kind of on the same.
Right. I think we're all.
At, we're at here when it comes to being able to do what's being asked of the council to do tonight.
Right.
And, and, and all of the things, the points that put forward, it's like, well, which part of this chicken do we cut off to try to, and it doesn't make any sense because now you don't have a chicken anymore. You know what I mean? I'm mixing my metaphors.
Stay with, I stay with.
I should have been drinking heavier before. I, I, um, I think that in terms of us as, as the council, we're, we are staying, listen, um, we are relying on staff to, to hold the line here. If we do this, we're, 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 we're saying, we, this is it. We're, we're done. We're not doing something like this again. We're done. And for all, for everything that you just did, we're not doing this lien thing, we're not doing that anymore because it's just not worth this. And that is for any developer, not just one, but for anybody. So that we know, we, we've learned a lot of things in this experience of what not to do in the future. But I think, um, for all of us, I, I, because I completely agree, everything from councillor, everybody, what we all said and what we've all gravelled with here. If we go forward with this, which is why I say I agree with the city manager that we should just make the motion because it, it will just sort itself out. Because, but with the caveat that in this public meeting, we are saying together as one voice, this is it. We're done. Then, then I would be happy to kind of move forward.
Well, I was just gonna say, you, you said very well what I was thinking. Yes, um, just that, first of all, this is one of those rare, rare times where I'm jealous of the mayor of Corvallis because he doesn't get a vote. He gotta figure out how I'm gonna vote. Um, but just to echo councillor Salsa, if I do vote for this, this is the first and last and only time I wanna vote for something like this. Um, and I would be in favor of having an ordinance around not transferring without like council approval just so that we can feel like we've put that issue to bed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but maybe we can prepare something like that for a future meeting. Yeah, um, just so that we can, yeah. And I guess that, that was my main thing is I don't like this. Um, but I do like some of the cleanup that's happened in preparation for this. I, I appreciate that we've ended the, the lien transfers. I appreciate that, that, the, you know, utility bills are paid. I appreciate that we're gonna try to take care of the negative review balance and everything. So, um, I, I appreciate all the work that went into this. And I, I think what I, I mean, what I keep saying and what I hear other people say about this project in general is just, we wanna get it done, wanna get it done in a way that, you know, does the current residents justice and, and does the future residents justice and, and does the entire community well. Um, and yeah, it's not fun or easy, but, um, but I, I wanna, I wanna be able to go visit that neighborhood and have it be complete and visit the park and have a block party and not ever have to talk about SDCs in that neighborhood ever again. So, um, that's my take. But we do have several motions available. Uh, just with the note that if someone wants to make motion one B, um, let me know and I'll pass you this piece of paper because Mike came up to me before the meeting, um, just if, if someone is gonna make motion one B, it needs to be a little different because we actually need to create a new fund for that. Oh, okay. I'll pass that over to councillor Salsa. Yes, so if you say the, that handwritten piece, that's one B. And then we can do two A. If that, if that's what you wanna do, I'm not telling you what to do.
I'm, I'm just.
Resolution 25 dash 10 on new section slash fund called SDC proprietary. And underneath added sentence, there is an increase in storm improvement capital LA and a corresponding decrease in contingency. And I further move to adopt resolution number 25 dash 10 as amended, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2024, 25, and making appropriate increases and changes for fiscal year 24, 25 as amended, and incorporating attachment A as part of the resolution.
Okay. Um, it's been moved by councillor Salsa. I am going to not repeat the motion. Is there a second on that?
Only because I really am hoping and trusting I will second that, that we're gonna lay this to rest and
Thank you.
How it be done as it should be.
Okay, um, city reporter, I know that was a lot. Do you have?
I give it credit.
Okay, okay. I, I think, and then Rich kind of melded the two, so that might be a go back and re-watch the meeting. Oh. Okay, um, so it's, excuse me. It's been moved by councillor Salsa and seconded by councillor Nielsen to do all that, um, which would be basically approving the 185,000 deduction from SDC stormwater funds, um, for the SDC credit purchase. Is there discussion on that motion, councillor Crocker?
Do we have to mention the 1,800?
Oh.
In the, the 18, 18,000, excuse me, yes.
For the sake of Crystal's sanity, I would prefer maybe if we, if we approve this motion, you can make another motion directing staff to do that. But I think this is just about the supplemental budget and that wouldn't be reflected in something.
That's a good idea.
So, um, so I think that's, we, I think that's a good idea, but just, just that would happen after this motion, if this motion passes. Any other discussion on this motion? I also wanna say a quick note to our people who are here for public comment. Usually public comment is, um, before all the meat of the meeting. So I'm sorry, um, but usually you don't have to sit here for an hour and a half and listen to us speaker, but here we are. Uh, we're almost there.
Say, the only vote is gonna be because I want the best for the community. Period.
Got it.
Amen.
Amen.
And I think we can agree that's how we are all going to vote. What we, what we think agrees. Um, any other discussion on the motion on the table?
All right, here we go.
Okay, with all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Would all those opposed, raise your hand and say nay? Okay, that looks like six ayes and one nay. And the amended resolution 25 dash 10 is adopted. And now, does councillor Crocker have a motion?
I have a motion to direct the city to withhold $18,000 to cover the, uh, amount owed to the city prior to.
Plan review?
Yes. Plan review. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by councillor Crocker and seconded by councillor Nielsen to direct staff to withhold $18,000 from, uh, the payment to MPC for the negative plan review balance. Is there a motion on that motion? Seeing none, with all those in, uh, favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Any final motions or thoughts on this issue that we've discussed for a while?
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, and thank you to Mike especially for all the work preparing supplemental budget. Um, we appreciate that.
So much.
Um, and thank you obviously to our other staff as well. Okay, uh, now we're gonna have public comments. Um, so first up, if we can have, um, Anson come up to the table and, um, if you can, again, try to keep it to around three minutes, we appreciate that. Um, what? Ben gave me a point, yes. And, um, the, the council president will have a timer and we'll just give you a 30-second warning if we do.
Okay.
Um, whenever you're ready.
Okay, so, um, hi everybody. It's a pleasure to meet you. Uh, I've never been to this room before. Uh, my name is Anson Antriasian. Uh, I live in Flometh on 11th Street. I've been here in Flometh since 2017. I live with my family, uh, we have jobs in Corvallis and Newport and, uh, we enjoy our life there. Like neighborhood has lots of kids. It's really fun for them to play with and like, you know, I'm, I'm happy with what Flometh is. Like the, or what it's going to be pretty much. Like there's more trees and, you know, socially it's, it's very safe and I, I, I wanna stay here. But what's concerning me is that, uh, we own a house. It's a pretty small lot. It's about the size of this table. It's like literally like a 500. Um, this is the south side, just exactly how it is on this table. It's like an analogy to 11th Street. So there's a street that goes along right here. That's, that's, that's our 11th street. And what's concerning me is that, uh, things are fine now, but there's a manufactured house right here. And then there's one lot over it, there's another one, another one. So there's two manufactured houses. And they're bought by a developer. I talked to the owner, the people that got, um, pushed out of the houses. I mean, you know, like following rules and stuff, like they, they got moved out. Uh, they said that, that there's two houses are being demoed and it's being replaced with something bigger, like a duplex or something like that. And that's cool. Like, uh, there's, there's about 120 feet, you know, for those two lots, which is, it's pretty, you know, it's a pretty good. There, the owner has said you, you were thinking about combining them and putting one structure on there, like a duplex. I don't know if it's gonna be a shit, like a split wall, like on two, I don't know those details, but this is early stages and, um, this is hard to predict. And if someone, like, I think legally, they can go up to five feet away from a yard. And if there's like a 24-foot house right there, then in mid-winter, that casts the shadow 68 feet all the way across my yard. And, um, sure, I could be argued that I should do a better job of getting more property if I really wanna have a garden, be more successful, be more economically, you know, like dominant and in control of myself. But right now, we just have this little yard and I want that grass to have sun on it. I want those blueberries to have sun on them so my kids can go out and eat them. And I want all those, the thyme to grow so I can make meatballs and stuff. And I want those, um, you know, those herbs over there that my wife likes. I, I just want those to grow too. And, um, so that's what's bothering me. Like, I, I'm concerned about if this thing is too close, then it's gonna encroach privacy and encroach shade. Lots of room in that land. I think they can kind of be coerced to put the, the house somewhere else, like further away, you know, to give me some, like a, a longer um, space there. But, you know, I wanna walk away with like what to do and what my leverage is.
Perfect. Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. Um, and I know you had mentioned to me you'd already spoken with Michael, our associate planner, I think, about some of the zoning stuff. Is that right?
Yeah, I talked to Michael, um, last week and he, you know, he, he's, he's very informed on the thing. And like, I'm a scientist, so I don't really think like of city planning. It's, it's like a different part of my brain, right? Like I think of electrons and, and like subatomic particles. And he's, um, so he showed a lot of information with me and a lot of it he transmitted to me through email. And one of them was like, well, the property, it's, the way it's set up is like, it, you won't get a 14-day notice. Like, I think, I forget what the reason is, but he says like, if they develop a duplex there or a, or a single-story house, then there's no opportunity for me, that they're not gonna have like a 14-day notice so that people can say, you know, say, hey, like, um, I don't know about that. I wanna make a comment. So I don't see why the owner should like cooperate with me, right? It's like, they're entrepreneurs. Maybe they wanna live there. Maybe they want someone to, you know, rent it and they wanna just, you know, it's to support them economically. So like, why would, why wouldn't they just put like as much development until it goes all the way, five feet away from my house? Like, I mean, I could be nice and say, hey, like, can you please move it away? But I don't see what leverage I have. Like, oh, why would they listen to me when they can just make $200,000 by putting more stuff there? So I think it's, I think it's, the five-foot setback is fine for like most situations, but for like, on some situations, like for South, South Days and Gardens, you, you need a little bit more if there's like a 25-foot house, you know? And this is, this is an analogous situation. This isn't, this isn't my house, but this is on 11th Street. Someone put a like 20 to 25-foot house there and then this, this gets shaded, you know? Like during winter, that house right there gets shaded like the whole, you know, during mid-winter, it's completely shaded from like direct, you know, beam radiation. Yeah, sure, it gets, it gets, there is diffuse light, right? And, you know, lights, that's come from different directions because we live in a cloudy area. But it's not the same. And diffuse light really wasn't as good as like direct, you know, photons coming from the sun. And like, there wouldn't be like this moss and lichens on, you know, the north side of my fence. So it's, um.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for being here and I think would Crystal or Chelsea?
Yes.
Do we need to get a copy of the, okay, if you wouldn't mind just letting staff make a copy of the photo just since, so we can enter it into the public record since you shared it with the council?
Okay.
Um, thank you very much for being here and for sharing. I think feel free to follow up with staff or with us if you have more.
Come, come talk to me if you want to just stop in. I can check, I can take a look at it.
Are you the next door over there or?
Yeah.
Yeah, from the city hall.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry to make you wait so long.
And good luck.
Um, okay, next up, we have, uh, Van Huntsaker for public comment. And I think you'll note on the desk, we should have a, uh, a letter from Van as well as some supplemental materials. Um, so again, same thing, Van, thank you for being here and maybe you can start off with just about three minutes or so.
Yeah, I'm. Thank you, Mayor Littmore in Flometh City Council, city manager. Department of law. I've, as you heard it a few weeks ago in the with the committee meeting, had some concerns that I wanted to share with you and Mayor suggested that I talk to you here. So the issues are, and I apologize, I have a headache now. I'm reading a conversation.
Me too.
I'm just gonna read this. Sorry, sorry. Currently, currently the water and sewer streets are paying more than their fair share of the public works cost. And as you heard at the budget committee meeting, the storm drain department has insufficient funds in general. Currently, you've published one thing in the budget knowing. Currently, you've published one thing in the budget knowing that you will spend the funds on something else. I don't like that at all. And also, the general use of the CIP and land building and equipment fund process of planning and setting aside funds to replace equipment and make infrastructure improvements in the future needs some work. Due to the fact that others like smaller cities, Philomath, various public works departments are operated with shared employees as well as pretty much everything else. For that, I understand that that makes some problems in doing what I'm suggesting that we do. However, I believe that my suggestion, financial and planning improvements for the public works department and the city in general will be a benefit for the city into the future. This is not something new. When I was mayor in the nineteen nineties, we addressed these issues and put a plan in place to put the city in a much better financial situation at the time. These are just a few challenges in the beginning, but there, after that, things will be easier. I encourage the city council staff to consider and implement my recommendations so that the various departments will pay their fair share. The city, excuse me. The, the city will have be much better financial situation over time. And there will be funds necessary for purchasing this equipment and for purchasing infrastructure improvements. I would be happy to work with the city to explain these things better. I'm, I'm not a, you know, writer, so when you look through that, I'm sure you're gonna have questions.
Three seconds.
I would be happy to work with the city to explain things more fully and actually help with the work to reduce staff time. Maybe the Public Works Committee would be a good place to start. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if you have any questions, that's fine, if not, that's fine too. If I could hopefully hear some from the council. One word done.
Yeah. And thank you for following up with us here. And I appreciate you, all the work you put into this, I think we'll all take a look at it. Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. All right. Is there anyone else here for public comment that didn't register, anyone online? Thank you so much. All right. Then we will close public comment. Is everyone doing okay? Do we need a break or anything?
Melanol.
Anyone need a drink? No. Okay. Again, sorry, you are on camera. Next up, we have the consent agenda, which has the minutes of our May twelfth and May twentieth meetings. And Council Andrade is right on the ball.
Double check. Scrivener error, but lines forty, forty-one in the May twelfth.
That's true.
Meeting are not, they're no longer council people.
We did get that sent to us, thank you, Brad. Crystal just got back today, so probably didn't get that. But thank you for, I think it weren't said correctly.
They, they came back for a day to vote yes.
Cool, but I knew that we approved the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. The consent agenda is unanimously. And we will move on to ordinances and resolutions where we have resolution twenty-five eleven sewer lateral liens. And my understanding of this, before I turn it back over to Mike, is just Public Works replaced all the sewer lines, I think this is primarily on, is this nineteenth street? Or various? Sixteenth, okay. Excuse me, don't listen to me, sixteenth street. On some streets. Sewer, Public Works replaced some sewer lines. Thank you. And as part of that, there are the private connections from the house to the sewer line that need to be replaced. They replaced them so that they were operational. And then because those belong to the homeowner, it's on the homeowner to pay for that improvement. And they had the opportunity to just pay for it upfront or to have this lien which has the info there about, you know, they can basically pay it off over three years. Yeah, yeah. Mike, any, anything to add on that?
You want to ride course?
Okay.
Basically, it's, these liens will be interest-free for the first three years. They accrue nine percent, nine and a half percent annually after three years. However, this has a really cool thing to it. They'll be capped, total interest will not exceed the original lien amount. I mean, the only thing that we're gonna do is increase it by three hundred dollars so we can file it and satisfy when it's all said and done. But it'll be that same number. I mean, it's ninety-one, twenty-eight, set that up and we have to know that stuff. So I mean, that's basically what, we started out with fifteen, nine paid, we have six outstanding. Council has to, now it's kind of like a transparency issue or saying, hey, we're doing this, they're, they're all aware of it, so. Once you guys approve this, we'll have twenty-one days, we'll give a twenty, twenty-one day notice before we lien them.
Thank you so much, Council Case.
And this is a curiosity only, where does the interest rate come from? Was that just set or is there an index or I just?
It's in the ordinance, one of the ordinances we have, we use it within the STC.
I saw that too, okay, it was just a curiosity.
You know, that's subject to whatever we, we wanna do it. I mean, if there's one that we move down to five percent, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Andrade.
To clarify, you said that they all know, like they, they've had a notice prior. Has there been any, like attempt to contact them over the phone or like in person so they, so that we know they definitely?
Yeah, we've talked to.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to double check on that.
The last letters were sent with first signature.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, cool. So like they had to sign.
And there have been a number of letters. Just wanted to make sure that was, like over, like over a year.
Did it, we did it once already. And once you, Council approves this, we'll do it one more time and then we'll lien.
Thank you.
And just also to add, the, the contractor for the city didn't have to do this work, they could have chosen to get their own contractor and do it, that was just an option for them because the contractor would be mobilized on site, so they could have, you know, done it that way. Right. But it was their choice.
I have a question, can we lengthen the no interest period? Or is that written in law?
That's in the statute area of ninety-one, twenty-eight.
Wow.
Well, you're a good counsel.
Well. Student, and the interest was an issue and I, I mean, I don't think it's, we would be out anymore if we lengthened it.
Yeah. So yeah, to clarify on these questions about the, the interest rates, you said it was an ordinance, so that's something that we could change? Both the rate and potentially for how long it's interesting.
When it comes to selling time, they're only gonna be changed, they're only gonna be charged the original rate, the twenty-one thousand, we will not charge them interest at all.
Then why does it say?
I can't answer that.
The accruing interest that you don't?
That's part of the rules that has been set up back in ninety-one.
Was that in the ordinance or just?
The resolution.
No, I guess, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused about, you said they're only paying what it, the original price, but no interest? No interest, but you have to.
We capped, so the total interest was not exceeding the original.
So. Okay, so it's kind of just a, just kidding. Okay, that was, thank you.
It's a way when we saw it the first time.
Is there effectively no interest?
Effectively, yes.
Is there a mechanism where you would pay part of this down and then the interest would build again though? Or?
No. That's why this, this. Say it, it's kind of strange. This is not the first year that we've. Or he's on the books already, moving seven, ninety-nine, and I think two thousand. So when they sell their property, it comes in, they just pay. For example, the first one on sixteenth street, they'll pay thirty-one thousand, or thirty-one, thirty-one hundred dollars, that's it. There will be no interest.
Well, but there'll be administrative fee, the three hundred.
That's already included in that.
Oh, that's already included in the thirty-one hundred? Okay. So then I, I'm gonna move to adopt resolution twenty-five eleven assessing identified landowners to the cost of constructing, constructing private sewer lateral and recording the lien in the Benton County lien records.
Private. Thank you. Okay, it's been moved by Council Nielsen and seconded by Council Salsa to adopt resolution twenty-five eleven assessing identified landowners, the cost of constructing private sewer laterals and recording the lien in Benton County lien records. I guess I'll just say, like, can we update?
Yeah.
Resolution twenty-one or ninety-one, twenty-eight? It seems like.
We have to move this in the.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It just, that would be my only piece of discussion is like, it feels like we're overcomplicating this.
In the future comment.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion on the motion to approve the resolution? Okay, would all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Animus, so resolution twenty-five eleven gets adopted. That brings us to reports, affairs, commissions, committees, council liaisons and staff. I think if we're all game, we could just go around and share again what our liaison roles have been up to or any other updates. I know several of those have been out at the farmer's market or any, any of those other activities, if you have anything you wanna share. Maybe, maybe we'll start with Council Crocker down there on the end.
Give me F again. Three services, they are in the midst of trying to do some fundraising. August seventh, they're having the big dinner out of Cardwell Hill. And they're also gonna have a booth at the Pride event on June twentieth. That's it.
Okay.
Oh, and I'm the city liaison to PYAC. They just had their carnival and president of the board, Danny Bennett, said it was their most successful carnival yet.
Nice. I wish like they had bouncy houses. For specifically like, you know, six foot. Sorry, anyway, Council Irwin.
I'm the liaison for.
Yes.
One with Community Foundation, you just heard how they're doing. It, it seems like things are going well. They are in a similar mode as we are, they're looking for projects and engagement and kind of looking towards moving into the future. And so I think that things are lining up nicely in terms of where we're working towards a future planning for the council and where we're headed with the city as a whole.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Council Salsa, you can.
I've had the pleasure of being at the, the first farmer's market with Council Crocker, was actually a delightful experience, we had a lot of engagement with the folks there and was able to carry forward some comments to the public works department, we got an upcoming police committee that's coming up this week as well. So I, I think that we're doing, we're doing really well in terms of the presence in the community and being very open there. We had a comment about the, the signage on the canopy itself, it's bring your questions here, we were getting questions about the farmer's market.
Yes.
Not this, but it just said, bring all your questions here, so, but you know what? It was okay. We just kept pointing and saying, that one's over there and this is over here and but, but people were engaged, so that was good. And then, the, and I'm working obviously with Campo and CW, CWACT and other transportation stuff, things that were, they're, they're dealing with obviously is just the, they don't know where funding is happening right now because of federal government thing and it's, it's, it's all up in the air at the moment. There are some projects that were already funded before the, the gate came swinging down. So there's some ongoing concerns there. On, on a personal note, you know, I've been on some of the Facebook groups that are around there and, and you know, kind of brought a little bit of, hey, we, we hear you, you know, conversations with some folks, which seems to have.
Yes.
Worked, which is good, but some of it again, Council Crocker and I have got a good discussion ready for the Jiva Police that's coming up for the committee there, so I'm looking forward to that and moving some things forward, I think we got. So anyway, I'm gonna end the report.
Thank you very much. Council Nielsen.
All right, a couple of things to report, one is Philomath Frolic, go, go Frolic. It is coming up, so tickets are for sale online, it's, the sales are going well, like I watch the little thing go, I check every day to see how the sales are going. They're doing well. Volunteers are needed, you can check the calendar, if you're listening to this, check the calendar, any community members, they need some volunteers to help with the Frolic crap, so please see what we can do to help them get ready for a wonderful Frolic weekend. In regards to the chamber lunch, had a wonderful lunch this last month, got a chance to focus on getting to know some business people in our community. Found out that Soft Star Shoes is expanding, they bought it under their company. And are they gonna be expanding their line, a little more athletic wear type thing along with what they're doing currently? And I'm kind of excited about that and what that's doing, getting to know a few more business owners in my own shy and reserved way. Yeah, we're gonna give Nike a run for them. So really good and just a shout out to our police department. We, I had a personal incident in our neighborhood and let me tell you, I wrote a letter to Chief Gersky and, and praise of his department because they handled what could have been a really difficult situation with such professionalism and courtesy and respect that I was just in awe of the way and manner in which they did so and so. A shout out to them for doing just, those officers are doing such a great job in, in making what could have been a hard situation as positive and as humane and kind and respectful as it could have been.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Maybe I'll go last, if Council Andrade wants.
Before I forget, Council Crocker, do you wanna mention the senior outreach?
Most of you aren't eligible. Fifty-five and up, and I don't mean to exclude anyone, you're welcome if you want. We are tomorrow at ten, having a tea and cookie time at the library in the conference room to brainstorm ways that we can improve life here in Philomath for seniors. If you wanna know more, ask me after tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
And it's part of our inclusivity communities, age-friendly community topic of conversation and ways to make things more accessible to everyone. And so then I'm on the hope board with Chris and we just had a, we're having a transition from the way that the board functions, I guess, like from planning to now implementing, and so now there's gonna be more liaisonship type roles with working groups. And yeah, no, it's really exciting, we just got bylaws today to review for our next meeting. And there's some information that they handed out to us at our last meeting that you have in front of you about the, what is, is it? Housing subsidy pool, what's that? Flexible, thank you, you're right, there we go, flexible housing subsidy, you're right. And so there's information about that, how they take funding from different sources and put it together and try to help house, houseless people in the best way that they. in the best way that they can, using what's available. And then, uh, this is the report on the highlights of twenty twenty-four. And they say they, they've housed now fifty-three, fifty-one, fifty-three?
During the meeting, they said, like fifty-seven now.
Fifty-seven, yeah. Yeah, so even this is outdated. So, yeah, it's all really exciting. And then as another note, I am one of the organizers for Philomena Pride. It is happening June twenty-eighth, noon to four, at Philomena City Park. It's gonna be a ton of fun. It's free, so yeah, come get some free mud oven pizza and snacks and drinks. The Samaritan Health Services is going to have their mobile medical unit to provide free healthcare, basic healthcare. And so many organizations and other groups, uh, free swag. Yeah, it's gonna be fun. And, and we're always looking for volunteers and, and kind donations. So if you want, you can, uh, if you're interested, you can email phillomethpride@gmail.com and/or find us on Facebook and Instagram.
And PCS will be collecting canned goods there. And we're ruffling up a basket for everybody that brings something to donate. They get a lot of it for us.
Yeah, and we have some, some donations for that too as well. And, um, from Dirt Road and I don't remember where else. And then Benton County Mental Health is sponsoring the free food, so. And some other things. Oh, and we're, we're gonna have open mic as well and details will be put out about that. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I am the liaison to the Fire and Rescue District and things are continuing on. But I, I will say that I gave my update to their board meeting today and they're still very concerned about the whole fire hydrant testing thing. I know, I know. So just to say, we might bring that up again at a Public Works Committee meeting just to figure out what our future plans are for that, because I know we can table it. And then, um, the, I'm also the liaison to the School District. They graduated a hundred and fifteen seniors and PHS on Saturday. So I got to go to that, which was very fun. I realized it was the first time I've been in the audience for a graduation since my brother's graduation in like twenty thirteen, because then I've been out on the stage a few times. But, um, so that was fun. It's a little toasty, but it's so cozy. And, um, there, the Philomena Academy graduation is, I think, tomorrow night, just out on the lawn by the Philomena Academy there at, yes. Brad's making a face, is that right? Okay, okay, good. Seven o'clock, there we go. So if you're, you know, looking for something to do, that's always a fun one. And then their board meeting is up this Thursday, so I'll be there just to share about what we're up to. And, um, the Public Works Committee meeting talked about last Friday potentially adding some bike lanes on Applegate in front of the schools. So one of the things that was delegated to me was talking to the school district about their thoughts on that and just how it might impact their traffic circulation, making sure they're incorporating that into their thoughts or if they have feedback. Yes. Oh, yes, Wednesday. Sorry, I thought today was Tuesday, that's how I'm, that's my.
As long the meeting has been.
Tomorrow. Thank you for that, yes, it's Wednesday night, seven PM. And then I also had a lovely breakfast with some of the coastal mayors last week, which I will say I really appreciated because I think in, well, it is off the coast, but it's also like really foggy and like six AM. But just because I think one thing that can be difficult about being Philomena in Benton County is that we don't really have any like direct tiers in Benton County. We have Corvallis, which is ten times as big as we are. And then we have Adair and Monroe, which are about, you know, a tenth the size that we are. So, um, it's, it's a challenge sometimes to like really, you know, talk to other folks who are really going through the same things we are. And, um, a lot of the towns to the west of us are more similar in size. So that was nice just to kind of hear what they were up to and, you know, how eerily similar it is to what we're up to, apart from they have millions of dollars in TLT funding that we don't have. But, you know, it's a blessing and a curse. And then the last piece was we officially did our If I Were Mayor contest celebration with Counselor Crocker and Counselor Salsa. We had the, the winners here for a lunch at City Hall and you have their winning essays in front of you. I just wanted to read off the one from Sylvie really quick. I'm not gonna read off the entire one for Tessa for the sake of time. But Sylvie, um, dear mayor, if I were mayor, I would start by making our town more inviting. I think we should make a new welcome to Philomena sign. I also think we should fix all of Philomena's bumpy roads. I would also like to have more community activities such as a movie night at the park. Another activity I would like to add to our city is a springtime parade. I really want to add a grocery store to our community too. I really like living in Philomena and I believe a lot of people do too. I also think these improvements will make Philomena more welcoming. I hope you consider my ideas. In steerly, Sylvie Schroeder, student at Philomena Elementary. Yes, and so we appreciate, we think all these ideas are great and some of them are things that are already in, so, uh, we really appreciated that. And then Tessa, um, wrote about a performing arts center, which is maybe a little more.
The most important thing.
Correct, but, you know, that's not in the works at the moment, but I'd love for it to be. And then are you able to, okay. And then I made a little video that I just wanted to share. It's, it's only sixty seconds long, I think, so don't worry. Just about the day. I was gonna say, but, um, part of the reason I'm so happy about this, this year is this, we really tried to boost the contest this year and, um, not just make it like you get a gift card in exchange for the five essays that get turned in. We got something like thirty essays submitted. We were able to do this big celebration involving, you know, the schools, the fire district, the police department. And that is in, I, I always say like eighty-five percent thanks to Crystal.
Yes.
Who really saw this whole thing through and, and did all the logistical work and everything. I just sort of got to be the figurehead for it and send a couple emails and write some letters, so. As well as Chris and Chelsea were very helpful in kind of pushing it forward and, and coming up with some of the great ideas. So, um, that being said, if you have any feedback or anything for next year, let us know. And we're always trying to make it bigger and better. So, um, any other thoughts from the council and then we'll get to our management report?
I did want to add, since you brought up the fire department anyway, that the fire department is, has worked out with the farmer's market that we're taking the spot where the, the council is it.
Oh, great.
To do hands-only CPR.
Oh, that's awesome, okay.
So that worked out and they're, they're agreeing about that.
And they're gonna bring a truck, right?
The, uh, on the, if this next Sunday, that will be our first.
Great, okay. I'll try to come say hi.
Right, we do it once a month.
Okay, okay. Great. Yes, Counsel.
I forgot to mention that I went to the Benton County Historical Society's Philomena Museum event. They have a Roots, Wings, Seeds thing where they focus on one of those over the course of three months. So, uh, the one on, over the weekend was Wings. The next one will be Seeds, it's on July fifth, from ten to noon. It was a ton of fun. I helped out, interacted with some kids, it's like part of their discovery days. So it's a way to explore different concepts, um, you know, kind of like free learning, free choice learning, but then also, um, having some people there to be able to ask questions and learn. So like, there was, um, I can't remember the group, but there were some people who are knowledgeable about birds and they had some like images, some, um, wings and diagrams of wing types. And it was telling, they had a airplane, you could make your own paper airplane that mimicked different bird flights and, I don't know, it was, it was fun. Yeah, July fifth will be Seeds, ten to noon. But they'll have, um, activities from Roots and Wings there as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Philomena Museum.
Our management team, would you like to share any highlights in the management report?
Heard the top of the. So, I, I think, um, you've got the written out management report. The only thing I'll highlight there is we did with, um, Rural Economic Alliance RIL, which focuses on economic development in rural and in Benton Counties. Uh, they did get a, a part-time director hired there, Nate Conroy, who's the, um, works with Oregon Rain, so he's the catalyst there. He's terrific, knows the area, knows the movers and shakers. We still have an agreement with Rain and they still have contracts with Benton County. So Rain is still very much active in Benton County. But we're gonna pull Nate aside on his own time with Just RIL, working with the rural cities and helping us put on our own events and helping businesses in our small communities to grow and to thrive outside of what Oregon Rain is doing, which really focuses more on entrepreneurship and startups. This will be focused more on some startups, but also existing businesses, growing current businesses and doing that work for us. So, um, exciting hire there, glad he accepted that. And we've already started talking, as noted there, about getting our strategic plan. We've got a kind of marketing plan to get word out about his services and what he'll be providing, what RIL is offering to local businesses to get that out there. Otherwise, again, my stuff's kind of self-explanatory. I will note, kind of a sad note, I'll end on a sad note. The ADA parking at the rodeo grounds isn't gonna happen before rodeo. It'll still happen this year, it'll happen this summer. We're just running into some permit issues, so it'll be after this year's rodeo. It was one, too many things to try to get squeezed in before, uh, the first week of July. But everything else is on track, it's looking great. I would say go down there and look, but don't go down there and look yet, there's still constructions, right? But it will be ready end of June, first week of July. It'll be a great event, all of the same, as previous years, we have the five K run, cornhole tournament, there's a lot of stuff. If you feel like rodeo, there's still a lot of great things to come down and participate in. The parade will be Saturday morning at ten still. Now, the five K run's gonna go right in front of the parade, so you'll be able to watch the runners go through. So there's something for everybody with the frolic, find something that you enjoy doing. And then, of course, um, the rodeo, three nights, the new seating's amazing. I've been up there a couple of times, gives you goosebumps, just picturing what that's gonna look like with everything and the, uh, just the pageantry and everything else going on. So I'm really looking forward to this year's frolic, it'll be a lot of fun, so participate where you can.
And you set a date for like a ribbon cutting?
We did, Tuesday, yeah, thank you. So Tuesday, July eighth, there'll be the ribbon cutting for everything. I've got some invitations, actually, supposed to work on today, got bumped. So tomorrow we'll get invitations out for everybody. I'm glad to have everybody from the council there, we're inviting our representatives, Benton County, Oregon Parks and Rec, everybody we have funding from. So we'll be getting those invitations out before the end of the week for sure. We're gonna do six o'clock.
In the morning.
At six PM for the ribbon cutting. And then if you are interested in volunteering, at seven o'clock is the all volunteers meeting. That's a mandatory meeting for anybody volunteered at the frolic during the frolic weekend. We go over emergency procedures and safety procedures and where everything is and all that. So that's a mandatory meeting at seven o'clock, right after the ribbon cutting. So if you're interested in volunteering, sign up or just show up to that meeting and we'll find a spot for you to take cookits or, uh, staff a gate or whatever, we'll find something for you to do.
May I ask one question real quick? Is Commonwealth the company that made the presentation to us?
No, it's a new company, up and running. We've met up with them at this last, um, well, no, we got in touch with them through roundabout means, but anyway.
It's okay, I was just wondering if it was the same.
They've got a lot of experience in Benton County, Albany, Corvallis. These guys have been doing it for a long time, know what they're doing. And so, yeah, they'll be a good resource. And we got an update, I think, just, just late last week or today. Anyway, as far as they say, they're working on a proposal, excited to get it to us. Probably early next week we'll have a, some type of proposal, what they're envisioning for that site and starting conversations about what that would look like, so.
Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
No, thank you.
My question also, out of curiosity, what is the difference between, uh, I mean, besides temporary and permanent? Like, what was the reason for that? Like, I didn't know why the permanent one hasn't been issued because they have things they need to meet. But like, what would warrant a temporary?
So temporary just allows them to start using the properties so they can start renting out. They were a little concerned about trying to get open before all of it let out because they want to try to capture college students, being able to put their stuff in their smaller units in that building E, the big building. So they're really trying to hit that, but they knew they didn't have all the landscaping and other things done. So they requested a temporary, just for the lack of it, see. Gives them a lot of sleep, but we still hold it open, that they've got other things they need to do before we're gonna sign off on everything.
So the, all the critical infrastructure has been finished?
Yeah, it's been completed, yeah. Safety, all the building inspections, all of that, it's just the landscaping, you know, it's outstanding.
Cool, sounds good, thanks.
Any other questions for the management board, Chelsea, I don't know if you have any? Then Mike, did you wanna highlight anything on the financials? Or were there any questions from the counselors on those? I really appreciate having them there.
Financials?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. Okay, okay, okay. Any questions or comments on the financial reports? Okay. The last thing that I probably should have brought up earlier, but I forgot, was, um, I had a resident reach out wanting to revive the discussion about, um, driving golf carts on city streets that I know Counselor Lehman brought up. And so I just kind of wanted to take the temperature of the council, if that's something that we would like to revive and maybe refer to the police committee or just sort of how, not, not to say we're not deciding on this tonight, but just, is, is that something we'd like the police committee to kind of look into and report back?
Hard to DM this, because police committee this week.
I know, well, that's true, we might, I don't know if we can.
I believe we talked about it and they said it wasn't legal. But I can follow up and find out for sure, because I thought we were done discussing it, so I didn't.
Or at least having that brought to council.
Right. So just if maybe the police committee could report back to the council on, on that and I can connect the resident with. Who's the chair of the police committee? Okay, someone else. Is there a chair?
So is the idea like exploring the idea of allowing there? I hadn't heard that.
There, so it came up in the past, Counselor Lehman really liked it, of allowing like other types of motorized vehicles that are not, you know, street legal cars, so like golf carts, um, on, specifically only on city-owned, like, you know, residential type streets, so not on the highway or anything. And Counselor Lehman was really into it and then once he left, I feel like it kind of fizzled a little.
Well, it died. It was talked about. Well, it died. It was talked about and the decision was to not import it.
Yes, but why don't it remain its way to the council?
Like a report back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just because this, this resident reached out to me. Yeah, I don't know. So.
Diane will take it.
Um, okay. So is the council fine with? Okay, um, and then I know there were lots of other things that came up on social media, which Chelsea told me to just have them fill out a form, but. Yes, oh, I know.
Contact form like Crystal, it's built as well as a code enforcement form for police department. And it just really helps us when you're out and you, you're hearing from people to send them our way. Um, not saying that you don't hear people that say, "We already went there" and that's different. But, um, you know, just to, to let people know that we do have those resources. And it helps us because we get a form and then we forward it to a staff member. And then if you ask Chris, "Do you know anything about that?", it's easy for us to search and see who that went to. And, um, it just helps us with follow-up. So, um, that was just, just so everyone knows, we do have that form really easily. It's on, I think, every page. If you scroll to the bottom, "Contact us", we'll kind of take you to that form. Um, so.
Yeah, Councilor.
I do have one more thing. I just opened an email from Janelle. Janelle and I have been, was over Farmer's Market. I've been talking about modify or expanding it to our Music in the Park on Wednesdays. Um, so I just received another email that she's all in, perfect timing. Corvallis Saturday, ours in the markets has unexpectedly closed. That leaves an opening for us to move in with additional people that are willing to have a place to come and sell their wares. So before I go any further, if the council is against this, I don't wanna jump in and sell help her. If the council says.
She seems to think.
She's asking, which does she?
No, that's, that's not why I presented it. You know, there were a couple of city counselors that gets mentioned that was seeing if that's something that they.
And she's, and I wanted to clarify what, what it, so it's not that we had approved it, but that she was expecting us to participate in it or have a council representative participate in it.
I think she's looking for any volunteer that's reliable.
Right.
Can be there.
And so we're, we're to make sure people are either setting up. I think, anyone, I don't think your council's supposed to, I just think that. So, um, I probably am willing to take over the July time and, and do the, because what she's asking is that you're there an hour before and you help them arrange where they're coming and, and she'll let me have access to the software to see where everyone's gonna be. I don't know if I wanna take it on as a permanent responsibility as a counselor. But, um, I think it might be fun for our, our city to have another midweek and maybe bolster the, but if everyone's against it, I won't, I'll just tell her, "No, we're not into this and we don't want that."
I don't know if I fully understand what's happening, but I.
Yeah, what she had said was, um, she has a lot of artisan people that they turned away from this market, um, who would probably be interested in having that. And then that it can expand into hopefully some other food vendors as well that are selling produce and things. Um, I think it, just in somewhere that, that they determine, uh, it'll be a city park. So, um, you know, it's just an area that is determined that it would be a good spot. I, we haven't really looked, it's not really our thing. It was just, we, we tend to.
Right.
You know, if someone is putting up a booth there to sell necklaces, that's what they're doing. Um, so it's kind of that for, from our perspective.
I, no. It's two, two minutes past, um, nine thirty. Are we all okay just going another like five minutes to wrap this up and then heading home? Okay, I'll take that as unanimous consent, public broker.
I would suggest we try it once or maybe twice this year and not put it in every Wednesday or, I mean, I, I don't think.
There's only three.
Yeah, and, um, then we can regroup and superplan. She said she was gonna take care of assigning spots and.
Right.
So she's gotta figure it out, but avoid the audience area and just go outside. And then the mud oven people, I guess that's her social number, that is, but, um, yeah, I'm not available.
And it is, she says as of right now, she has more artisan interest than say produce and food currently in having another place to sell. But, um, I'm willing to help her in July. That's the next one on a Wednesday, I believe, is July ninth. So I have that date available, so, but unless, if the council votes that they'd rather not have that as be a part of Music in the Park, I'm okay with that too.
So we've had artisans there in the past. When we first started, after the first year or two, we opened it up to artisans and craft vendor type things. We had a few takers early on. It just never really blossomed into a great venue for that because it was fairly short. And, you know, we don't have a huge crowd to our Music in the Park events. It's a good crowd, but it's not like thousands of people are coming or even hundreds. We get usually about a hundred people or so. Um, but there's room there for vendor stuff, for food vendors. We talked to Janelle and worked on the details of the staff level we need to, but, you know, I wouldn't want to inhibit any parking areas and that, so it'd have to be food vendors willing to park and get their stuff off of the, you know, gravel area, the asphalt area. And so we'll see. I think we'd work something out if the council's not opposed to it, then we can work out the details with Janelle.
Trial.
We'll work with her and we'll, no, Teresa's on look for this one.
I'll pick July.
You said she'd handle everything.
Counselor Salsa?
No, I just, I was just trying to follow, are we trying to make some kind of this?
I think it feels like general consensus that we like the idea.
Against the farmer market, trying to branch out in that area for those particular days.
We are in fact into it.
We're into it.
Yeah, but it's the official position of the. That, yeah, yeah.
I would like to see the. Families that are, have food insecurities.
Yeah.
I would love to have more fresh foods, fresh fruits and vegetables available for our community. Being, especially since we have a grocery store. Still, that having that would be great.
I have one question and I'll, I can follow up. What's the status of the covered, called the picnic shelter at the veterans' park? Are we still planning to put that in at some point?
Budget pending.
Yeah, you know, basically I'm for donation. Oh, we're not getting that donated.
No, it's like labor maybe donated, but, uh, material we need to purchase and we'd have it budgeted for materials.
Correct, okay, gotcha. Okay, um, any final thoughts? Um, but just then a friendly reminder that, um, we will be meeting again on the twenty-third for our budget meeting, um, to adopt next year's budget. So, um, please be there for that. And if you're not able to be there, let us know as soon as you can because we definitely need a quorum. Yeah, um, or if you can zoom in or something, um, we, we wanna make sure we get that passed. So, um, we'll see you all.
I'm not, sorry, that's Monday.
Monday the twenty-third, yeah.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in there.
Oh, okay. Well, we don't need everyone. We just need a quorum. A quorum of people willing to pass the budget.
We've already got two people on vacation holding grandbabies.
So just please, uh, you can, like, send me, Chris and Crystal or something. If you can't be there, please send that to us as soon as you can, so we can.
Well, add the, that, those are the only agenda items we're planning to be on that, so.
Should go fairly quick.
Yeah, but if we don't, yeah, small drink day. But if we don't do it, government shutdown. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, um, I guess the only last thing, information correspondence, there's a few things in there. But, um, I think major, um, I think the only thing, just appreciate this memo about the resolution number correction. And then Chris and I sent in this letter about our sewer ask, give us state legislature. So we'll see if that goes through. Um, well, thank you. That was, I don't remember. I think it was a joint effort.
No, you wrote most of it. You've been there. I mean, it's told ninety percent of you.
Okay, um, with that, I will adjourn this meeting at nine thirty-eight. See you all on the twenty-third.
Perfect.
Thanks, everybody. Good meeting.